We call the meeting back to order, 6:15 for our second public hearing. We have an administrative appeal from Mr. Plord off of a cease and desist on 5 Quabog Street. Mr. Plord, and if his attorney is present, could you please join us?
Where would you like me to sit?
Um, maybe on the big chair? Jeff, do you have a...
Grab one of them chairs.
Jeff, do you want to grab a little chair and just bring it over towards Kenny?
Hey, Joe, how are you? Good to see you.
Go ahead.
Nick, did you want to come up or...
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sit right there, Nick.
Can I sit right here?
You can sit right there.
All right, so for everybody that's in attendance, Mr. Plord has filed an appeal based on a cease and desist order 45 Quabog Street in regards to his use of the property. Uh, Mr. Thoma, would you like to fill everybody in on the decision and...
Well, he was given a court decision, uh, I believe last year, and in that decision, he was allowed to basically, uh, conduct practices, motocross practices at his property. In the interim, we have found out that he is, uh, in fact, running a business over there, and I don't think he's going to argue with that. Uh, he's charging prices, he's advertising, uh, it is an accessory use, uh, which, well, which is not allowed in our usage table at all for a motocross track, and, um, so he is operating illegally as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Plord?
I gave him a cease and desist on May 24th, and he appealed it.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Mr. Plord, welcome.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Here, Mr. Plord?
Yes.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
So, any... I'm okay, but thank you.
(laughing) I know it's not good to selectmen and him, so...
What's that?
I'm... Nothing, that's right. I'll keep my mouth shut.
There's no need to keep your mouth shut.
All right.
If we could just speak up, I'm going to be guilty of that as well. I kind of fade and then I have to come back up.
Yep.
Uh, so you heard, uh, Mr. Thoma's rendition of the circumstance. Uh, you are appealing that decision.
Yes, sir.
And do you disagree that you're conducting business?
Uh, 100 percent disagree. Well, I am running a business down there. Oh, okay. Well, here's my...
And you are?
My attorney.
Okay. Your name?
My name's Joseph Mizhir.
Spell that, please.
M-I-Z-H-I-R. And, uh, if I may, I would like to respond and say a few words.
Please.
I, uh, have been working with Dan for quite some time. Uh, I represented him when he bought the property several years ago. I represented him before this board, uh, a couple of years ago when we appealed a cease and desist by one of the prior zoning enforcement officers, uh, where that officer had alleged that the motocross track was a, uh, an illegal activity not allowed by zoning, and we had made the argument that it was grandfathered, it was a prior, uh, non-conforming, pre-existing use. The track... Do you feel I should give you a background on the history of the track?
I'm very familiar with the history. As Mr. Plord stated, I was a selectman.
Okay.
Um, but I'd like to stop you because I think everybody knows that history, but we're at this point now for the simple fact that we have a ruling from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that he's not able to use that as a grandfathered, non-conforming law. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, if I may. My name is Jeffrey Blight, I'm town council. He can use it as a non-conforming use.
For practice use.
For practice, but I think it's important here to, and I'll quote from the, from the court's decision, um, just to kind of give you a little bit of background here because it is a matter of degree. It says here, "While there is a credible, while there is credible evidence of some recreational use at the track at the time the bylaw took effect, the plaintiff has not proved to the court that any competitive racing was occurring at the track at the time the bylaw took effect." The decision goes on to then say that "there is certainly a difference in the effect on the neighborhood of the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track and numerous commercial competitive races being, uh, hosted at the property." So, essentially what the court found was, is that there was a pre-existing non-conforming use, which appeared to be, in the, in the words of the court, "occasional motocross rider practicing at the track." I think that the bill and commissioner, or the strike, the zoning enforcement officer here has said, um, based on the, the, the public record, that Mr. Plord is essentially conducting a practice motocross track with memberships that runs, and I'm sure you're going to hear this from the audience, uh, that runs seven days a week.
It does not run seven days a week.
All right, six days a week, five days a week.
It doesn't run six days either.
Okay. But, so this is where we sit. It's a, it's a matter of degree.
So, so when we say matter of degree, is he by that decision allowed to, to have paying customers come to that property?
My thought is, well, and this is, this is, again, it's an interpretation. It says here, "There is certainly difference in the effect on the neighborhood of the occasional motocross rider practicing at the property."
So, that, that leaves it open.
Well, to a frequency, and I, and I think what you're here to determine today is, through the testimony of others and, and your zoning enforcement officer, is has he, has he so expanded what, what is outlined by the court so much that is, that is, that it has gone beyond the, and I'll quote again, "the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track." And if you find that, then he, then he has exceeded and he needs a finding.
It's, it's subjective. He's got one definition of occasional, you have one definition of occasional, everybody in this room has another definition of occasional.
Well, I, I would suggest that if you sit here and listen to the testimony...
I've heard it, I've, I know it very well.
Well, and, and, and again, I would suggest that occasional doesn't mean five days a week. It doesn't mean, um, membership sold to a significant amount of people out there in the public. It doesn't mean that there are showers, uh, and, and bike washes available. It doesn't mean that there's a pro shop available at the site.
So, what, what, what grounds does Mr. Thoma have for a cease and desist?
The grounds are that he's exceeded the allowed, the non-conforming use as found by the court, and I think that that's what his cease and desist order says.
And that's where I'm getting into the subjectivity of the decision.
Sure. And, and you know what? When, when we come to a pre-existing non-conforming use and whether or not it's exceeded under the so-called powers test, that's exactly what you have to do. You have to sit here and you have to look and say, "The occasional motocross rider practicing at the track, does that mean somebody that's there from 10, practicing from 10 o'clock till dusk, five days a week, that are paying customers, where, where there are, I believe there were snow cross events, or at least advertised, where there's a pro shop, where there's a bike wash?" I think that that, you know, and that's, that's your call.
So, through KP's interpretation, well, let...
I think it's a reasonable interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer.
I, I, I understand that, so I'm going to take a step back. In, in regards to Town of Brookfield versus Mr. Plord...
Right.
Is that all done? Everything's done?
That, that case is done except for, of course, we have the decision and what I'm reading.
So, now we have to get to the subjectivity of that decision, which I thought was more clear than that, but the way that you read it, it's not. So, Mr. Plord, have you worked with the town to get a license to do things?
No, because I...
With all due respect, um, I'm here to represent Mr. Plord, and if I can respond to any questions...
That's between you and your client, sir, but I'm going to direct my questions to Mr. Plord.
All right. And you'll allow me to answer?
Yep, 100 percent.
Okay. Um, just a couple of things first to clarify what has been said so far. There were essentially two issues before the court. One was, um, has racing continued as a pre-existing non-conforming use and/or has it just been practice? And we did not even argue that racing had been continuing and being, and should have been allowed. We essentially said, "Look, it's been used as a practice track. We, we concede that." At one time, there were races there, everyone agrees, but those stopped, and we don't expect, um, that racing will now be allowed there because it hasn't continued. So, as far as the practicing goes, uh, that was the only issue before the court, and of course, the court did find that it was a grandfathered use. Now, the other thing that you need to know is, this issue was already brought by town council back to the court after the decision was issued. A motion was filed for clarification asking the court to, uh, limit the hours, limit the number of riders, essentially everything that they're now asking you to do. That motion was denied. They didn't tell you that, okay?
No, it was, it was, there was no action taken.
There was no action taken on it, okay?
Based on what grounds, Jeff?
Based on the ground that I think the judge, frankly, I think the judge retired, and council also argued that if we wanted to do that, if we believed that it was a change or a substantial extension, then we should have filed a cease and desist and we should come before the ZBA. That was his argument.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of upset that we spent all this money, had all this animosity towards a businessman in town and his neighbors, and nothing got resolved.
The other thing that I would respond to is that the track is essentially being used in the same exact manner it's always been used since, uh, Mr. Uh...
Guys, guys, guys.
Wait, get turned, please. Mr. Wallace owned it. Um, when Mr. Wallace owned it, uh, he ran a business out of that, or he had a workshop, I don't know whether he was, uh, he was doing woodworking, and the, the, uh, the track was open for anyone to use while he was there. Mr. Plord's, uh, operating a business, uh, at the same, at the same location, and people are allowed to come there when he's there opening his vending business. Now, you raised a good issue too, is that, okay, um, the zoning enforcement officer has issued a cease and desist saying that no riding can go on at the property. Well, we know that riding can happen because we've...
Well, is it riding or business? Practice is allowed, I said.
Business. I didn't, I'll look at it closely, but I didn't, I just said cease and desist.
Right.
But he doesn't say, "Okay, you need to go back to the same conditions that Mr. Wallace had, and you can be open on these certain days, for these certain hours, you can only have these certain riders." He can't do that because there's never been any restrictions. It's always just been open for any time, any place, any number of riders.
So, I understand the arguments. Why, why can't we work on this? And I know your, your brow's going a little bit crazy.
I don't know where you're going with this, that's why.
So, just like his attorney states, limit the size of bikes, or mufflers, or times, or shrubbery, or something that we can do to help these people out here, but allow him to use his land? Because that court decision, in my opinion, allows him to use his land.
He can use his property? Yeah, he can use it.
And he can run dirt bikes?
He can run practices, yes. Can't run a business there.
Yeah, and, and...
And that's what he's been doing.
He can get 100 people in there, say, "Come on in, be as loud as you want."
He can invite his friends, absolutely.
So, why can't we work with Mr. Plord on helping each other?
Because of his court.
Helping all these people out here and helping each other.
This court ruling indicates, dictates what's what we can do. Court ruling, you can't...
I think it's very subjective.
It doesn't matter, it's still a court ruling, we have to act within the court ruling.
That says he can still use the property.
Yes, I never said he couldn't. I'm saying he can't run it as a business, according to the court ruling.
Do you read it that way, Jeff?
Well, I, I, I do read that, I think broadly read, and again, as you correctly pointed out, that, uh, there is some room for interpretation. I think broadly read that he can't use it for, it's a commercial use, that, that, I think it prohibits a commercial use and only allows for the occasional motocross rider at the track practicing. Now, with respect to...
So, can I stop you there?
Yep.
If it's the occasional practice that that individual's paying for, you believe that that's excluded?
Uh, and it says here, "and numerous commercial competitive races being hosted," is that excluded? Uh, under the court ruling, what the court found was that the historic use of the property was for, again, the occasional motocross rider for practice, and that throughout that time there had been some contributions to, uh, the track owner, Mr. Wallace, for the upkeep and maintenance of the track. Um, from what I, what I've seen in this file from the zoning enforcement officer, it appears to be going far, far beyond that. Um, I don't know, and you might be able to ask Mr. Plord or his attorney, um, how much the memberships are and, and how many people are in the, how many people have signed up and are members for practicing, uh, but the occasional motocross rider doesn't mean that rider one goes there twice a week, and then rider two goes there twice a week, and then, you know, you've got 400 riders going there twice a week so that it's run from 4 o'clock, uh, strike that 10 o'clock in the morning until dark. Uh, I think the occasional motocross rider means occasionally at the track, somebody's using the track. Now, to go back to your question, could the town and Mr. Plord come up with a, with a solution and, and still conform with this? I'm sure we could. I, I'm sure that the, I'm sure that the town and Mr. Plord, if both are willing to work together on it, I'm sure that there is leeway in this decision where we could, we could do both.
Who would he have to work with?
He would have to work with the zoning enforcement officer.
Strictly.
Why don't you put a committee together of neighbors and town officials?
So, Mr. Plord, the, the way the wind's blowing is that you're not going to win your appeal this evening. I'm a very blunt, open person, I hope you respect that. Are you willing to work with the town to have a win-win situation?
We've been very willing in the past to do that. The last court case...
Guys, please. That's a, and that's a second interruption. If there's another interruption, I'm just going to have to clear the whole room.
Um, I submitted a proposed, uh, list of operating days, operating, this was during the, while the other case was pending before we went to trial, I had submitted a proposal to Jeff for, uh, certain days, certain hours, and, uh, I'm not sure what he did with it, but it didn't go any further, there was no...
What about baffling type systems, shrubbery?
No, we, but my point is this, we've always been available for talking and working this out. I submitted a proposal, it was the town, whether it was the zoning board or the town of selectmen, who did not want to engage in settlement, so we, you know...
Well, we're, we're, we're over that bridge.
And we're fine with that.
And that's, that's where I've asked town council.
I know, probably going to have a hard time convincing people in this room of this, but...
100 percent.
Dan's a very reasonable person.
But you have to understand that, that we're here to represent, through the board of selectmen, these people that sit here and pay taxes, to listen to that.
To listen to what?
To, to the noise.
Well, it's a...
And I've had, I've had, I've had the complaints come across my desk when I was there for six years, so I'm very familiar with it. But, but I understand a gentleman buying a piece of property, thinking it was grandfathered, wanting to start a business, but in anything, you just have to work together. I, you don't feel that we can work with Mr. Plord?
I didn't say that, absolutely.
I'm asking, I guess that's the question.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Are you willing to?
Of course I am.
Mr. Plord, are you willing to?
Yes. Yeah, well, but, you know, it's always good to talk. There's nothing wrong with talking, I mean...
But, but to get to a point where we're going to be satisfied as a town?
Well, I don't know, I mean...
Well, it's got to satisfy both sides.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It can't just satisfy that, it's got to satisfy you too.
I want a, I want a win-win situation.
You know what I mean? I mean, I've been fighting this since I bought the property, and, you know, the town didn't work, want to work with me from the get-go. I had a meeting with Clarence Snyder in the police station, and he wanted to work things out with me, and he went, I told him my hours and operations, he said, "You know what? That does not seem unreasonable." Came back and talked to the other select board, they didn't want to even, they didn't even want to listen to it. They all disagreed, no one wants to call, they say I'm impossible to work with, but if you ask anybody that knows me, I'm a very calm individual, I am very nice to everybody. Ask Charlie, I know Charlie quite well, I know Roger quite well, and this is the first time we've ever met.
I'm just getting, I'm getting attacked by the selectmen all the time, all the time. I have an air and noise study that I did on my own because of the noise that they're talking about.
Let's stick to the issue. We're willing to talk...
Well, that is, that is the issue, council, it's the noise.
It's the only issue, it's the noise.
Well, we're talking about whether we're going to settle the case, as I was saying.
And it's the noise. But, but moving forward, I still believe that the appeal is not favorable, he's, he's going to lose the appeal this evening, but moving forward, working with the gentleman.
We have to abide by the zoning bylaws of this town.
Correct.
I do, and this board does.
And you have, you have his, you have his council and himself saying that he's willing to do that. The select, the selectmen are taken out of the picture now, it's solely in your hands with representation of town council.
We can, I'm sure we can work together if Mr. Plord is willing to compromise.
So, poll through the, through the board, do you believe that we're not going to approve this? Yes, sir.
I would just suggest that if, if this is going to be the outcome, I would suggest really that we just continue this hearing for two weeks, and that way, if we're able to resolve it, we're able to resolve it, if not, then we can come back, rather than taking a vote tonight, um, unless, I mean, it's really up to you, but I don't know what you're going to vote, you're going to vote it up or down. I mean, if you're going to vote it, as a mayor, I would ask, I would have the, the public give their input.
So, you, but, so I'm going to take a step back, and my mind's reeling, so in order for us, the reason for us to reconvene in two weeks would be to possibly give him some type of lenience through zoning.
Well, to, to continue this hearing and to determine whether or not you're going to uphold the cease and desist, um, if we're able to reach an agreement, then, you know, at that point, we can, we can, we can come before the board or we can, I suppose we'd come before the board and then we would present the agreement, both parties, and the board would vote, vote that as part of their decision.
But there's really no decision to be made. If, he still has to be compliant.
Right, but there may be, we may be...
Our zoning enforcement officer believes he's non-compliant.
But he may be able to say that I'll do X, Y, and Z, which then our, whoops, sorry, then our zoning enforcement officer believes will come into compliance, he'll put that, will memorialize that here in ZBA decision, and that will be the, the decision, and that will be what, what heretofore everybody, um, lives with, including him and his successors.
So, what I'm going to do, is the board okay with continuing this in two weeks? Because you have to attend.
Is there any contingency to make noise for two weeks?
I would ask, I'd ask the applicant too, if he's okay with it.
Yeah, um, I know I'm going to be, do you have something like in the beginning of August, around August 8th?
I'm in the hunt on August 8th, but I can probably do any other day from there.
So, I guess the question, Mr. Plord, is are you willing to, to curb the noise while we work on this?
Well, what do you mean by curb the noise? I mean, you can't, the bikes make this...
Make a conscious effort to minimize? Because right now, as it stands, if we take a vote tonight, he's done, he's...
Well, no.
Well, you can appeal it, yada, yada.
And we would, and we would ask for attorney's fees and costs, and there's a lot of things I haven't been able to say tonight that I, if you want to hear from me...
You can say whatever you'd like, sir.
Okay. Couple of things. First of all, I believe that, very strongly, that this decision that town council and, and Mr. Thoma, is it Thoma, Thoma, Thoma?
Thoma.
They're mischaracterizing it greatly because they keep using this word occasional. The only issue before the court, when we went to trial, was, was this a grandfathered activity? And all we needed to show, as you probably all know, is that there was never a period longer than two years where the track was not used. It wasn't, we weren't there to prove how many people were riding, how often it was used, what they were paying, those were not issues before the court. The only court is, is this track grandfathered? And the answer was, of course, yes. Now, they've taken a small part of that decision where the judge, um, compares racing to practicing, and in order to say that racing cannot continue, she says, you know, "There's a difference between racing and occasional motocross practicing." She doesn't say or make any finding that that's all that's going on at the track. And if we had to, we could have brought in witnesses to show that it was used every day. The fees, as a matter of fact, Kenny, you answered interrogatories in that question, you said that your grandson was paying $500 a year to practice there.
600.
600. So, Mr. Thoma says, you know, "Now you're charging 600..." Well, your grandson was riding there how many years ago?
But that makes it, that makes it so that you're running two businesses on the same piece of property, which is against the bylaws.
But what I'm saying is, people have been paying $600 for a long time.
Well, they've been paying it, sure.
Okay. That's not in the cease and desist, and they don't tell you that. So, there's no doubt in my mind, if we go back, we're going to bring in witnesses, and we're going to show that the track has always been used the same way it is now. It was the same layout, it's always been available, there's never been restricted hours, there's never been restricted riders.
But Mr. Cleveland brings up the point of one of the cease and desists is that he's operating second business without permits.
Well, I'm, I mean...
You're telling us that this is a business.
It's grandfathered, it's been going on since, since, uh, Mr. Wallace owned it, and he was, had his own building there running his woodworking shop, so, I mean, there's always been two businesses there.
Machine shop, of course.
Machine shop. I mean, I don't, these are all new issues that I hadn't heard before, but it's the same thing, he's doing the same thing that Mr. Wallace was doing.
Well, you had a copy of Mr. Thoma's cease and desist, right?
Yes.
There's other things going on that too, council, there's like a bike pro shop, the showers, uh, the bike wash, it's, it's, there's many businesses going on down there, and they need a permit. If you're going to do anything extra, you need a permit, if it's allowed, I think. And there's no permit.
And bike wash and shower would be complimentary?
Well, that's, they're incidental to the use, and you can't expand us on expanding.
That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of things going on down there that's...
I really think all this can be resolved in a, in a discussion, in a meeting of the minds, I really do.
Last thing that I wanted to say was about the noise, and we, yes, we have had, I mean, the easiest way to shut the track down would be to have someone say that it doesn't meet the legal limits for sound, but it does. Uh, and if you look at an aerial photo, you'll see that this track is, I mean, I don't, I mean, my numbers probably aren't exact, but there's a huge radius where there isn't any other buildings or any other abutters, almost a mile wide. And I've done, over the last 20 years, done quite a few permits for motocross tracks throughout New England.
Well, the, the issue, sir, is, is the water. It's carrying the water, that's adjacent to his property, the lake.
Yeah, well, you're saying that that causes the noise to carry around.
The water level changes the sound effect across the whole area.
There's a lot of things that change, worry that, you know, the wind, um, the ambient...
But, but you understand that this, there wouldn't be a camera in this room, there wouldn't be people in this room unless there was an issue. There's obviously an issue.
Well, there's not an issue as far as legality goes because he meets the criteria. There's an issue because some people think that you should just move to the country and not hear any noise, other people think you go to the country to ride dirt bikes. Um, and, you know, that track's been there since 1982, and it's going to continue to be there, I mean...
So, Mr. Plord, if we continue this, are you willing to work with Mr. Thoma?
But, Mr. Chairman, also, the things that I listed earlier, the bike wash, that wasn't there back then. All that is new stuff now that he, Mr. Plord's adding.
All of this is a hose and house washer.
I'm just saying, it's all extra stuff, that's, that requires...
Are you, are you stepping back from trying to work with him if we continue?
I don't know if he's going to be willing to...
I've heard that he will be.
I'm not getting those...
So, out of your, your mouth, Mr. Plord, are you willing to work with the town?
I've said it, I've said it unconditionally many times.
Out of your lips, sir.
It's, it's between me and my attorney because I, this man I trust, and whatever he says, I will do.
I'll be glad to go to court. I don't have any doubt we're going to win this again and get attorney's fees, okay? The court is not going to like this, they didn't like it last time, they're going to like it less this time, we're wasting their time, but having said that, I'm going to sit down with anybody here...
I'm going to hear everybody in the room, Nick, don't worry about it.
And, uh...
Just get to them, though.
Yeah, 100 percent, but I want to get to this, to the meeting of the minds.
But I'm all about settlement, and I'm all about trying to work things out.
So, I've, I've heard that, so if you want to speak on this issue, I ask you to please stand and speak loudly. So, I'm going to go with ladies first? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Mari Mariano, can I ask a question to them through you? Hi.
Hi.
What is your, what is their interpretation of occasional? Is my, my question.
I started to explain that to, um, the board. That's not what the ruling, um, the judge...
That's not what I'm asking him, I'm just asking what is interpretation of it.
Well, I don't know, it's like, like has been said, it's occasional, and we don't feel like we're limited to that, that that was just, uh, verbiage that was in the decision, but that wasn't before the court.
So, am I misunderstanding to you, to your council through you, that when you say, in, in the ruling that was previous, I don't even know when it was or anything, but that it shouldn't be occasional? Am I misinterpreting something, that, that they were okay to operate occasionally?
You, you are not misinterpreting.
Okay.
And in order for me really to, if you don't mind, in order for me to really fully answer that question, a pre-existing non-conformal use, if zoning comes into effect tomorrow and you have a, a, a dress shop, and it's 200 square... and you have a, a, a dress shop, and it's 200 square feet, and that, that use is no longer allowed in that zone, five years from now, you decide that you wanna increase your dress shop to a dress shop, a fitting room, a, a department store, and you wanna increase it to 10,000 square feet. The use of selling dresses is grandfathered, it's a pre-existing non-conformant use. However, at some point, and there's a test for this, at some point, you've expanded beyond that what was protected. So, in interpreting this decision, I try to take a look at what is protected. And the court has said that there certainly, there is certainly a difference in the effect on the neighborhood of the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track, and the numerous commercial competitive races being hosted there. In conclusion, the plaintiff can use the track for practice. But there we run into this issue of, and a pre-existing non-conformant use, when do we go beyond what was protected? And the zoning enforcement officer is saying that they've gone beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Second question, if I might, through you, to whichever we'd like to answer. I understood that there was a noise study done, can you tell me what the decimal levels were during that noise study?
I just got this today, the only thing that I know is that there were tests done, and that the findings were within the legal limits.
Were they done both within the track and outside?
I don't have all the specifics. I don't have anything else I can really share with you right now.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah.
And to you, Mr. Chairman, I strongly suggest, suggest only, that if you're going to have a meeting of the minds, who seem to be very willing, I, I think you should outstretched and get some neighbors or some other people, not just the authorities at B. Sometimes, when you get out of your paradigm, you hear something from somebody else. You hear it, instead of with the closed ears, and I have to do this, and I'm right, and they're wrong, and I, it doesn't always work that way. And we might say something, but they might say something that says, oh, yeah, we can do that. So, but that's a suggestion, that you open up more people.
I'm gonna go with the woman first, yes, ma'am.
Marlene Roden, a couple of comments, someone has been alluded to already, that the track before, and what I believe the judge approved, was a pre-existing use. And I believe that this has gone way beyond the pre-existing use. I mean, before it was a track, I think the only money or labor that was exchanged was to keep the track running, you know, moving dirt, whatever the case had to be. It didn't include stores, it didn't include fees, it didn't include washing, and, by the way, the washing, if it's just a hose, as I think I heard the attorney say, are there oils and grease and stuff being washed away? Because I never knew anything about this hose thing until tonight. And, I had something else?
We'll come back to it if you want.
You better.
Thank you.
I know there's a cease and desist, that's apparently put out on May 24th, but he has not ceased and desisted at all.
Right.
And, so what's to say that we put this off, so we're gonna have to listen, and the occasional, by the way, is every day of the week, just about. Seriously, I mean, I lived in this town for 45 years, and I've been a good citizen, and I can't believe that the level of noise, I think it's even worse this year than it was last year. I don't know what they're doing, I think the whole idea is to make noise. And then you can get five and six of them going, and it's, you can't be outside. Literally, you cannot be outside. If you wanted to sell your house, which I guess some people are trying to sell their house, you can't, I don't know when you can do it, because somebody would say, what's that noise in the background? It's constant, seriously, it's constant. And, so are we to assume the cease and desist, which he hasn't honored yet, is going to take, is, he's gonna honor it now? For two weeks, or before, when the next meeting is? How can he get away with not honoring the, the cease and desist? I don't have a statement.
My belief is, as long as there's an appeal, he doesn't have to. Is that correct, Jeff, or?
Typically, that's the way that it's, that it's done, is during an appeal period, the town's back off. I, I suppose that, I think we could probably legally go in and enforce it at this point, but of course, my brother here will simply argue, look, this is before the ZBA, let them make a decision, and it's likely Superior Court will say, yeah, let them make the decision, then, then they'll weigh in after you vote.
And in my mind, sometimes it's till 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock at night, you, you.
8:20.
8:20.
That's where the agreement should, there should be some step.
I mean, I can't understand why there's no, like, regulations at all.
I agree, yes, ma'am.
The, the other thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Plort has said, and I don't think he hides the fact, that he has said, I have a lot of money, and I will fight this as long as it takes. And a man who says something like that, in my opinion, is not willing to negotiate. So, I'm requesting that his appeal be denied because of that. If they can work something out, great, we can deal with that, and move forward. But I don't think you give some, you deny, I don't think you grant somebody an appeal when they walk in with that kind of an attitude.
Well, the only attitude I heard is from you, so. But they, not, not you giving an attitude, but expressing his attitude, probably, which I haven't heard.
I think other people in the room have heard the same thing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I live in the neighborhood, and I do occasionally hear the noise from motorcycles.
Your name is?
Hey, I'm Roger Carroll.
Thank you.
I live on, on Maples. So, I do occasionally do hear the motorcycle noise, but to me, it's not offensive, right up, right next to it. Living in a bedroom community where the tap space is, is basically all homeowners, I find it calling that the town's not open to letting new businesses come in and working with us. Put control measures in place that are acceptable to the abutters, make them, make them do the improvements that are, that are okay to the abutters, give them the permits and tax them. I welcome that, I think that'd be a great thing.
As my, so we can work on the, yes, sir.
My, Greg Maraud, on the 41 Pine Lane. My viewpoint's pretty much the same people here. 20 years ago, I moved to this town, I lived in Worcester, next to 290. It's like being back there now. I go sit on my deck in the morning, I last cup of coffee, I can, yeah, it's ridiculous, like the mosquitoes buzzing around my goddamn head, part of the French. Wife's not too happy either. They wanna run a business, fine, just find a way to tone it down or something, it's ridiculous. None of us moved out here to hear the frigging goddamn bites. You know? I, I've got berries running around, back in my hair, I've got deer everywhere, and I gotta hear that stuff. You know, and it's, it's not just in the morning, it's, it's in the evenings, in the afternoons. But there's gotta be some kind of compromise, where they can run their business, but it's not, especially the morning hours, guys, that's just, my wife works nights, you don't have to face her in the morning, I do. She scares the shit out of me.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to be practical, as well as logistical, I'm gonna say that Jeff Clark, 38 Pine Lane, is, I'm trying to be practical and logistical, a logistics-oriented here. Given the tension that I feel, if the board was to do anything besides vote tonight, I would suggest a structured, mediated discussion with an independent situation or person in there, with both parties coming to talk about whatever they need to talk about with someone who is basically impartial and can sort of, you know, take, take both sides into account before they do anything. Otherwise, I think it's, it's, based on what I've seen here, it's just gonna be another, it's gonna go around in circles.
My, my belief was that they could work it out, did you want somebody else in the room to mediate, or?
Well, my suggestion is that we just simply, you know, can, we've made a proposal already before, I can, I gotta talk to Dan, see if he's still willing to do that. And if he is, then I think the ball's in your court, or, you know, whoever is gonna be representative, whether it's Jeff-
The representative is Mr. Thomo.
Okay. He's gonna have to look at that and decide whether or not he can agree to it now that we've already gone to court and established that it is grandfathered, or if not, maybe there's something that, you know, he can suggest as a counteroffer.
And you're willing to give and take?
Yeah, I mean, like, and we haven't really talked settlements since, because we, we did win the case, and-
But now we're, we're kicking a can down, down the road, where it's open to attorney-
We're very happy to go back to court if we have to.
Yes, sir.
If you, but I would like to see happen, seriously, if you have a rule, make a ruling tonight with an exempt on it, that we will, but make a ruling tonight, is that what, no?
If we make a ruling, then the, the hearing's over.
I, I would suggest, yeah, if you make a ruling, the hearing's over, and then we can't make a ruling that would encompass our, our settlement, so I would strongly suggest that-
We continue.
If they'll agree to continue, we continue it to week, two weeks, three weeks, whatever.
And, and I'm totally willing, if you want that mediator, if you wanna reach out to me, give me a call, happy to sit in the room and go with you. I think I'm a pretty open-minded guy.
Let me go back to, like I said, we made a proposal, let me talk to Dan, I'll talk to him when we finish here tonight, and he can think about it over the evening. Tomorrow, I'll either, you know, we'll either offer the same thing or some sort of, and I can either, you know, fax it or email it.
We'll discuss if we even wanna continue, because I'm just speaking off-
Sorry?
And we'll discuss if we even wanna continue, because we haven't heard the board, and we'll talk about days. Are you done, sir? Yes, sir.
I'm, sorry.
That's okay.
I can't be more emphatic that you need someone who's impartial in that role, because it's not gonna go anywhere, you're gonna go around in a circle, and the whole thing's gonna come back in your laps again.
Well said, well said.
Or it's gonna go before the, the court again. I don't, I don't see enough, whatever, to, to get this moved ahead, and I think it's very important for the people here who live next to the place to get some resolution without going around like this.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Gary, first.
Let's clarify a few things. I'm Gary Lincoln, I live a quarter mile away, 3, 4, non-mile away, it's the radius is non-mile. There's people affected a quarter mile away, so that's number one. Number two, he talks about working with the town, well, he's gotta sign up that says no Brookfield town officials allowed on the site, right? So, that's a willingness to work with the town. And, and thirdly, of course, you know, cease and desist, he involved in cease and desist, he had people there racing the very day he was issued the order, so he's not allowed to work with the town. He doesn't believe that there should be any licensing authority or anybody to set down some rules as far as what the noise is, and the noise is obnoxious. And absolutely, the sound levels, we do have a sound level by law in the town, and, and the sound levels are well above that. And so, there needs to be some limitations on noise, and he's not gonna do that, you know? So, he, he's no more gonna work with the town than a man who, he hasn't ever, and he just has, has no intention to, and so, and so, that's what we're dealing with here. So, you give him an inch, and he's gonna take a mile, and this is what he's done already with this, with the interpretation of the, the judge's ruling, and, and he's just blown it all up into this big, full-blown MX-13 baloney with how many events planned for the next two or three months, he has three and four and five events, with I don't know how many bikes and everything else, nobody can go down there and see what's going on. And, and so, it's just totally out of hand. And he, and he thinks he doesn't have to pay any attention to anybody. And that's partially due to his lawyer, who thinks that they won, and so, he can, he's got heart planted, he can do anything he wants to. And so, that's what we're up against. And there's a lot of people here that, that are affected by this, and, and are upset as much as I am.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Don Taft, I'm not in a butter, but resident of the town. You say that you've made a proposal, would you care to share that with us tonight?
I didn't, I mean, I could probably go through my file.
I remember what it was, if you want me to answer that. Because I remember the meeting with the- Do you guys think that's suggestive to have this conversation tonight?
No, it'll leave it there.
I, I say we let it work on it, if we as a board agree.
All right. From my perspective, occasional is less than half. So, if there are seven days a week, less than half is three. If there's eight, 12 hours in a day, less than half of that is less than six. You wanna take that into consideration for occasional?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Michael Ropper, I'm in the Brookfield Conservation Commission. We're running the rule a lot, we do a lot of cleanup and walking around, and I can't help but notice that this is, it says, no trespassing, and it says town officials. And as a member of the Conservation Commission, we're vested in interest in just checking the wetlands and the floodlands, for the reason why we can't go down that.
Well, can I answer that?
100%.
Conservation's Commission is to rule on applications and set guidelines and rules for projects that have an impact on wetlands, it's not an enforcement agency.
Yeah, but Sam-
There's not, so there's no reason for you to go on and police his property, just like there's no reason to police anyone else's.
If you can't go down and see if the problem's going on-
Well, if you have a legitimate-
You have to say the actual word.
Yeah. If you have a legitimate concern, if somebody signs a complaint, it's legitimate, and you wanna talk about it.
We can't, we can't view the property and not go have a complaint.
Well, this is-
Surely, the people who come down on their motocross, you might go to Trump's, who also say, wow, this is a complaint. And, and just an inspection.
Yeah. Well, you don't have that right, and this is the United States, and we exercise our right to not have any kind of government agency come on the property that's not allowed.
The, the ambulance is allowed down there when he picked up the dead kid, and the other kid broke his neck, that was, believe me, this is gonna be more awkward to warn.
And you came before our Conservation Commission back in 2013, 2014.
Yeah, we'll see.
And we have, we have minutes, and you said it was a private use zone, when you came in.
I, yeah, I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I'm not-
You tried to save the minutes, I think.
Yeah.
I don't really care to get into what I do.
We, we can have this discussion, yes.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have one more?
I thought we had two more.
Okay.
I just wanted to sort of add, and we brought it up, somebody actually got killed down there. And so, at what point is the town going to be liable, because they didn't do anything? Just, just move this on.
I, through you, I just wanted to say that the people that I'm with here tonight don't wanna start his business. We're concerned with the noise. I am, personally, I'm not busy for anybody else who came with me. I'd like to sit out on my desk, view the river, and have some enjoyment. I don't wanna see him have to close his business, and I don't want him to think we're all against him running a business. We're just concerned, we wanna work with him, if we can, to curtail the hours, maybe, and the noise levels. That's what we're there for.
Board, any discussions with the board?
I think you got it.
One more here. Yes, one second.
I'm sorry.
Beth, yeah?
Just-
Name, please.
Beth Hoffman. So, I'm on the board, so I've been, I have been in contact, I've been, okay?
Sure.
Board, I'm sorry.
Problem.
If it's not intentional, we may, we may. I contacted him last fall, so the biggest concern that I have is that he did not re-initiate contact after that time, very polite conversation, it seemed like we might be able to find some common ground. He didn't respond to any of my attempts to contact until after the cease and desist order was actually issued, okay? So, I, I think that there is a little bit of disingenuousness, probably that's the number, okay? To say, hey, I'm ready to work with the town, okay?
Well, you're, you're putting words in his mouth. I, I'm gonna take a step back, I, I'm hopeful and optimistic that we could do something.
I get it, so, I think that there could be room to do that, okay? So long as, and I really like just like a mediator, because at this point, I think we have a lot of anger in this town because of the noise levels, okay? And because of the hours have been not just variable, but very late some nights. I, I can tell you right now, I'm lucky, I live in a portion of town where there's a couple of hills that, that it hits, and a bunch of houses that it hits before it hits my house. And because I don't like getting my neighbors angry because I've got way too many dogs, I keep my windows shut, so it's not a big issue for me, as it is for people that want to sit out on the porch next to the water. I get it, it doesn't touch me personally, okay? So, but it can't be this while I run the case, so it's, you know, get off my back. It's got to be, be in a good way, right? And it sounds like that's what the folks up in the anton's foot are talking about, is that we're across the water, we just want a good day, okay? There aren't voluntary actions that you could take to mitigate the noise, that I've even had this discussion prior to me about that, okay? That maybe they didn't take them, maybe they haven't been, because of this prohibition for town employees to even step foot on the property, okay? Makes it really hard to have the discussion.
But you're reiterating the anger and the resentment, and it's, I don't think it's productive towards where we want to be moving towards.
Well, no, I think it can be, I think we need to establish the fact that there have been some outreach, okay? A lot of the offers that we're talking about were pre the court case, and this is the court case. A lot of the energy and a lot of the communication has been, we want our court case, don't compromise, okay? If this is legitimately, in the next couple of weeks, the time that we can sit down and really talk about this, and talk about meeting that occasional, and making sure that we have some agreement in place about how long or when for doing sound studies within the town, I think there's a lot of room to actually have this discussion and try to take not just the noise down, but the temperature down, okay? But it's got to be legit, that the intent is to take both the noise and the temperature down from both sides, okay? So, if that's where we're at, then I think this is an opportunity to continue the hearing and have those discussions, and some self-policing in those two weeks, because to Kelly, some of the other folks who rock out of here today, one of two things is going to happen, okay? You're either going to give us appeal, and people are going to be stuck with this forever, complaining about it forever, okay? Or you're going to deny us appeal, we're going to be in court, and they're in the court case, to your point. It's very hard for towns to do in court, okay? If we really want to solve it, we've got to talk to one another, we've got to talk to one another, taking into consideration what the neighbors have said, which is that we really need to figure out how to not be, you know, be a little bit French crackly, which to one another, both the town and the business.
Is that French?
No, America, right? Too much America costs the rent, okay?
I want to ask Gary a few questions.
Why are we having a lot of Americans?
Did you do it after? I think we're done.
So, that seems like an option that at least has, I'm not going to say that it does fix it, because obviously, the action's going to be there while we're waiting to get to that next date, so.
As much as I don't want to, as much as I don't want to cut you off, Beth, you keep reiterating everything you're saying and what the crowd's saying, what we said before, we're almost 45 minutes past our next hearing, okay?
Great, but I'm just saying, it's got to be legit.
I get your point, we made that as well. Any discussions with the board? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Brian Plum, highland, lived on the lake, bought the property in 73, raised the kids there. Absolutely decided to stay, I wanted to spend the rest of my life, because I could go out in my yard anytime, and it was so serene and so quiet, I could hear the wing beats of dust fly overhead. That's why I bought the property, that's why I've sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars into the property. This is where I'd like to stay. But now I have to close my skylights, I haven't had them open for five years because the sound force in. I can't ventilate the bathroom on the second floor, because if I open the window, the sound force in. We hear the hoes, we hear the sound in our hoes.
So, board?
Steve, can I speak?
Really quick, Dave.
It's the rest of them. I think your board should come up with someone else besides the zoning officer, because I know he will not be.
I, I.
Well, just let me speak, I think you should find, like the gentleman suggested, find an independent person, have the zoning officers sit in doing the negotiations, but you should really have someone else do the negotiating for the town.
The way that I see this, and through counsel, through what he's basically stating, is that it's going to be a back-and-forth via email or whatnot, I don't really see it face-to-face, I'd love it to be.
Why can't we do it face-to-face?
I'd love it to be face-to-face, and if this board doesn't mind, if you two gentlemen don't mind, I would be more than willing to sit in between.
Dan Ford's is not an evil man, he's not a bad man. I mean, a lot of people are mad at him, but I've spoken with him before in the past, and he's a nice guy. Personally, he's a really nice guy. He's running a business, he wants to take care of his business, I understand that. I, Mr. Holdcraft, I represent the town, and the bylaws of the town. I don't take things personally.
You cannot negotiate this.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will do whatever you need to do.
Whatever this board discusses, and doesn't offend you to.
I don't.
All right, so we're done with the public section, we continue this on August 7th. So, is that the desire of this board to continue?
Part of me says it might be a good thing, and part of me says it might not be.
Steve, can I say something?
100%.
What I see here is that these guys have already won a court case that says that they can legally do what they're doing. What we've got in front of us is the fact that they've got additional principal uses that they need to handle. So they need to come to us and get additional principal uses for the additional things he's doing. He's already, okay, do his motor truck.
But, but, I would disagree, there's a word in there, occasional.
But you interpret, occasional is interpreted.
And I don't want to have to go in front of a judge, and we're against the town of Brookfield, when we have an individual that's willing to work with the town.
Okay, I'm just, I wanted to make sure I was thinking straight.
You are.
That he's legal to do what he's doing.
So, Kenny, when you say that long of a timeframe, what's wrong with two weeks on the 31st?
I'm not going to be here, sorry to interrupt, but I know I can't be here then.
If it's negotiated prior to that, do you even need to be here?
Well, no, I mean, if they have a settlement, then I'll be.
It's going to be one of two things, it's either a settlement, or we come back and we either approve it or we deny it.
Unfortunately, I can't be available, I'm handling a jury trial.
The same issue with Mr. Thomo, does he need to be here? If we have a settlement, I don't think.
If there's a settlement, no one, I don't have to be.
Yeah, no, no.
If there's a settlement, yes.
I'd like to see it two weeks, it alleviates a lot of the apprehension in this room. Are you guys willing to do two weeks, is the 31st work for you guys?
I mean, Kenny, I don't mean to interrupt, but that's not a lot of time when you're talking about, you know, I don't, I mean.
I think the issues are very well-known, I think you could lay them out in five or six bullets.
So, I mean, you're.
It's just a decision if your client wants to work with Mr. Thomo or not. I think two weeks is probably double the time that we need. I think we can get this done tomorrow, to be honest with you.
Well, we haven't even really begun to establish what you're looking for and what we're looking for, and, you know, there hasn't been any talk about that, you know?
I've had plenty of talk in my boards, and I'm sure your privy to them, came up in court, is this the noise? We have a zoning enforcement officer stating secondary use. Avatar box operation for that definition of occasional, I think those three things are huge. Should be right on the top, and I'm sure you can come up with a couple more easily. I want this to be a win-win for everyone in this room.
Okay.
So are we okay with two weeks, ladies and gentlemen?
The 31st, you said?
Yep, July 1. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
6:00 PM? So I'm going to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing, possible negotiations to reconvene on July 31st. I'd like to make the motion that we continue the hearing until July 31st at 6:00 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Foul in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, hearing is adjourned. 7:12. How you been, man? We're in recess until.
How you been, Tony? You've been all right.
The board. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to reconvene, open the public hearing for Mr. Holdcraft at 7:20. Again, it is another administrative appeal for 6 weeks, ladies and gentlemen, if you're going to talk, please take that out of this room. Thank you. Administrative appeal filed by Mr. Holdcraft for 6 South Maple Street, Mr. Thomo, please explain.
Uh, yes, okay. Mr. Holdcraft was issued a violation on May 23rd, 2018, 2018, for junk material, leaving junk materials at his address at 6 South Maple Street in Brookfield. That is a violation of town bylaws, Section 4, District Use Regulation C, environmental controls, District B prohibited use of all districts, all uses which are excessively obnoxious, hazardous, dangerous to the neighborhood, property, all open-air storage of junk, salvage materials, and except as otherwise provided in this bylaw, et cetera, et cetera. I gave him three days to bring the property into compliance, he failed. He is, right now, in the past month and a half, he has been bringing property or material from 90 Lake Road to that property to dispose of, basically. He's not allowed to do that by the town bylaws, and that's why we're here. He appealed that decision, so we're here with you.
Mr. Holdcraft, what do you say of the charges?
First of all, this whole case is already in federal court. This whole exact thing, I was violated for leaving stuff outside of the shed or on the property, not having shrubbery and signage, this is already in federal court. And if you don't want to, if you don't want to go along with that, I'm having a yard sale down there like I have since 1990. And I can do that, and I don't know, you can tell me what junk is or what debris is, or anything else. But, the fact is, the stuff goes, I put the stuff there and it disappears, I bring more stuff in and it disappears. I'm having a penny yard sale, which I can do under our bylaws. So either way, you can't, you can't bring me back, I'm already in court for this. I mean, this is just harassment by this town, we know what it's all about, it's about the yellow sign. The yellow sign, no matter what happens in court, we're going to have a sign down there one way or the other. So the town is going to be spending probably upwards of 100,000 by the time you're done with me. Because I'm not going away. So basically, I'm running a yard sale down there, it's a penny, cups down there, it's an honor system, and I've been doing it since 1990. Like I said, this is harassment by Mr. Thomo as well, personal harassment.
Counsel, what do you say to the defense of an appeal and/or yard sale?
Sure, just so that you know, though, as you probably know, what is in the federal court is an appeal of this board's earlier decision that found that a special permit granted back in 2003 had expired, all right? What's not in court is whether or not Mr. Holdcraft can store junk and debris on the front of 6 South Maple Street. In fact, to the extent that the special permit is even a relevant inquiry here, that particular special permit, which this board found, had already expired. But even if you were to think about that, the special permit says no items will be left outside of the building at any time. So what is, what is before the federal court is whether or not this board correctly found that the permit had expired. Not whether or not that there was a violation of the permit, or anything that is currently before you here today. With respect to a so-called yard sale, I think that, from the information that I've been provided, and certainly that Mr. Thomo has talked about here, is there has been stuff out there for the last month and a half, two months. So if you're to find that somebody putting a sign out that has a junkyard and says, free, a penny, is a yard sale, I would suggest that your definition would essentially swallow up this open-air, the prohibition against open-air storage of junk down there. Mr. Holdcraft is also under an order by the land court to remove the junk and other debris at 90 Lake Road, and to lawfully dispose of that property, and to provide the town with documentation. So, he's just, at least from what the zoning enforcement officer has just testified to, he appears to be just shuffling this around. If it's junk down there and he brings it up here, it's junk up here.
Is that what you're doing there?
First of all, he's, first of all, we're not talking about 90 Lake Road.
So we are, are you taking?
Uh, excuse me, can I, can I talk?
You can, I asked you a question.
No, that's not true, that's not true what he just said, and I will explain.
So you're not taking junk from Lake Road and bringing it to Maple Street?
Some of the stuff I am, which I can do.
So it is true.
Some of it I can do that, yes, I can do that, there's nothing that says I can't do that. Number two, storage, nothing is being stored up there. It's a yard sale, and anyone in this room can testify, that stuff doesn't stay there. It's new stuff all the time. I can have a yard sale there, right now I'm operating a yard sale there. Show me in the bylaws where it shows me that I cannot have a yard sale. Show me, okay? 90 Lake Road has nothing to do with this, nothing's being stored there, I'm having a yard sale there, period, that's what I'm doing. This is all about the yellow sign, that's what this is all about, so. As far as the appeal, yes, in federal court, the appeal states three things that was violated in my permit. It stated shrubbery, signage, and stuff being left on the property. And now you're bringing me back up again, because I'm leaving stuff on the property again. So you're double, you're double-depping me again. It's all under that, it's all under that permit, and that's what's in federal court right now, the whole thing. You're bringing me back in again, for the same thing again, stuff being left outside. Okay, so I'm not doing that, I'm running a yard sale, there's a big sign that says yard sale on my fence. Everyone in this town knows that that's what's going on.
The issue before the federal court, which I argued very recently, is whether or not, and this board can take its own notice of what happened during the special permit expiration appeal. This board voted four to one, that said that the 2003 special permit had expired by its terms. That was, that decision was then appealed to the Worcester Superior Court, in which Mr. Holdcraft then added a civil rights claim for a violation of his First Amendment right. We remove that to federal court, that's what's before the federal court. Because the Holdcraft is confusing the fact that Mr. Thomo, if you recall, had actually issued an enforcement order. What precipitated the appeal to you about the expiration of the permit was that there was a request for an enforcement saying that the permit had expired. Mr. Thomo found out, determined, that he didn't believe it had expired, but that there were violations of that order. Not being satisfied, the complaintant came to this court, that came to this board and said, it's expired, you said it's expired. So the only issue before the federal court is whether or not that permit has expired. Not whether or not the conditions that Mr. Thomo has put on it were lawful. With respect to this yard sale, I think that, to the extent that there is no definition in there about a yard sale, that is certainly within your purview to say that a yard sale doesn't mean that you can put junk out on your front lawn 24/7, six months of the year.
So can I stop right there?
Yeah.
I have, I have a kind of an understanding where this board's going to go. My main issue is with that appeal. Being in process, we talked about this at the last hearing, basically, nothing happens until that appeal is resolved in court. My personal belief, and it wasn't coincidental, you mentioned the shrubbery and Mr. Thomo stating that it was just, he was not performing, it had nothing to do with the special permit. I think it was like the next day, Mr. Holdcraft went out with a can of spray paint and painted yard sale on the fence. So to me, that is part of it, because that shed in that process was part of setting junk, or the yard sale, however we're defining it. I have, I have a huge issue with taking property from Lake Street and bringing it down there.
I guess I don't quite understand your question, if you believe, like I say, the federal case is all about whether or not that 2003 special permit expired.
And through that discussion, which you were here for, everything under the umbrella was brought up for that special permit. The sign, the shed, the shrubbery, the yard sale was part of that, because that was the signage. We had the argument that the sign was supposed to be for a yard sale, not the big yellow one, which is supposed to be for selling the stuff. And the shed was supposed to be there to store the stuff.
But that's not at the federal court level right now.
The whole thing is, that's a special permit.
The whole, but, but only before the special, before the court is not whether or not Mr. Holdcraft complied with the special permit, right? Because that's what your zoning enforcement officer had originally found.
The special permit expired.
Expired, whether or not your decision said it was, that it was.
But this takes two steps back, because if it didn't expire, now he's going to be found that he's not in compliance with that special permit.
That, well, if it's found that it didn't expire, if he, if he wins, then you are right. Then what we would do, we would go back to his enforcement order. But right now, what, not, the open-air storage of junk down there has really nothing to do with whether or not the permit expired.
No.
And, again, this yard sale that has gone on now for 24/7, and, you know, Mr. Thomo can.
You say a couple of months, it's not a couple of months, it's probably over a decade.
1990, show me in here where it says I can't do it 24/7, show me, show me in here.
I think.
No, no, I want you to show me, you, you are assuming and making stuff up, okay?
How much did, how much?
Yeah, it doesn't say that, okay?
How much has he made on the yard sale?
That's not a question for me.
It's not, that's not your business.
It's my business.
That's correct, there you go.
There's no yard sale, everyone knows that. That's, that's, that's just an excuse, everyone here knows that's just an excuse.
It's a yard sale.
And you know what, everyone here knows that.
I, I know what the yard sale's about, but my issue is, is that, and we've had this discussion. discussion...
Well, let's not, let's not... It is what it is.
All right, I got a question to ask the town council here. Okay, so if we're not in federal court, where are we going to, if we're not in federal court for leaving stuff outside, shrubbery and signage, if we're not in federal court for all those things, what courtroom are we going into? Tell me. Answer that question.
Well, first of all, the zoning enforcement officer issued a cease and desist order, an enforcement order, that was never appealed to the ZVA. Okay? So, to the extent that, that order, that order was never appealed, it's a valid order. However, in this, in the, in the subsequent actions after the, after the order was issued, then the appeal of the special permit came to this board, and this board said that special permit expired. So, as long as that special permit has expired, zoning enforcement's order enforcing that special permit is in question. All right? It's not, we're not enforcing that order. What we're doing here is, is the added open-air storage of junk. The issue about whether or not his enforcement order under the special permit is valid is just, it's not something that's here before you right now. The, really, the issue here is whether or not somebody can take junk debris, frankly, and I think he's admitted it, from a property that he has an order on right now to clean up, bring it up to another one, and leave it there 24/7 with a sign, and then, and say it's, look, it's, it's a, it's a yard sale. I suggest that at some point, right, I can't find in your zoning bylaw that it says a yard sale allows you to, to, to put junk in your driveway from, you know, 3 o'clock in the afternoon until 6 o'clock at night, and then it has to be taken all in? But I think that the ordinary use of, and what everybody understands a yard sale to be, is not to essentially have stuff out there 24/7.
I have a problem, Dave, with you taking stuff from Lake and bringing it to hell when you have a court order saying you have to get rid of it and document how you get rid of it.
That's correct. And I spoke to the judge, and I told him what I was doing. He said, "Give me some receipts when people are taking it," and that's what I'm doing. There's nothing here that says in the law that says I can't take stuff from one house, a rental house, and bring it over to another property that I have. Where is it? No. And number two, as far as me not appealing, you violated me, the town violated me, this board violated me, because you did not give me due process when you first brought me in here, June 19th. You did not give me any certification of mail, you did not notify your buddies, and you did not notify me. I was only notified verbally. That's a violation of the open meeting law. And then you tagged four meetings, all illegal. And you know it, Jeff, and you went along with it. And that's in federal court, too.
This is what we're dealing with here.
Excuse me, Nick, I'm speaking right now.
There is a history.
I'm speaking right now. So, all this, all the things that we're discussing here tonight is in court. It's in federal court. And if it's not in federal court, Jeff, what other court is there? There isn't. It's all in federal court. That's where it is.
So, discussing for the board, you have questions, comments? Nothing? Nothing?
I guess, you know, unfortunately, you know, I feel that, you know, someone does a yard sale, a yard sale is not something, again, it's 24/7, seven days a week. You know, I want a yard sale, I come out, I put my stuff out for a weekend, I self-take it in. I don't think, I don't know, that's, that's my interpretation of a yard sale.
Ken? Open to the public? Yes, sir.
So, I was at the ZVA hearing in 2003. There were about 50 residents there at all. It's actually the same thing they say about issuing a permit for that user. Resoundingly no, not allowed in the circle to the neighborhood. You cited the specifics of the zoning bylaw. Could you say those again?
The three conditions?
Yeah, you said hazardous conditions, storage of junk.
Yes.
What were the other conditions that are violating?
Okay, any, all uses which are excessively obnoxious, hazardous, or injurious to the neighborhood or to property in the vicinity. All open-air storage of junk, salvage materials, and except as otherwise provided by this, in this bylaw.
Okay. So, I think there's violation of every one of those things, right? So, I, I don't live right next door, I live two or three blocks from there. So, about five years ago, I put my house for sale, and the first thing that the realtor said was, "What's all that junk down there? That's kind of hurt the value of it." He'd been doing that for 20 years. So, then we find out this year that, that 2003 zoning allowance had a bunch of conditions that we never enforced, we never followed up on. So, it is injurious to the neighborhood. Really, David, a very street business man, this is not a yard sale. This is a cost avoidance measure for the business. He paid to clean out people's homes and properly dispose of that junk. It's free to him, it's not free to me, it's not free to these other people in this town who have to go by that ice water every day. That, that cost us, cost us not only money and the value of our homes, but our enjoyment of our homes, our ability to enjoy this neighborhood. I'd have people come by and say, "Oh, you live in a Brookfield that has all the junk there, right?" Not in a nice Brookfield, you can throw it in a wet Brookfield. When we get a clean in town, now, you need to start enforcing these zoning laws proactively instead of going after after it back.
We, we took Mr. Holdcraft to court. He has, he's under a court order right now, and we're taking three other people to court too.
So, I understand you're taking proactive action now, but he's been doing it since 1990. I lived in 2000, he's been doing it since then.
I've only been in the zoning office for a couple of years.
I understand, Nick, that that's, you're doing a great job, but the town as a whole has not done a great job in enforcing our zoning laws. It's like, wait, if the police department waits for the formal, if the police department is in court, what, what's the use of having a law that I'm enforcing proactively?
I agree.
Okay. So, again, I can't stress enough about how it is injurious. I've seen people slow down to take a look there, people almost get in accidents because you, you know, all of a sudden someone's going down, you're looking for junk that they want to pick up. But it is a safety hazard, it's injurious to the neighborhood. The other thing as well, that is just atrocious that we allow this to continue.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Question, a comment about, concerned about trash being taken from one property and taken to another place. Now, Lake Road is under a court order, correct?
Correct.
But he still brings trash in openly. I mean, that's his business.
That's a whole other issue. I have a huge issue, Don, with him taking stuff from Lake and bringing it over to the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, can I ask a question? Can he still, because he's under a court order to clean it up, still bring in more trash?
At 90 Lake Road?
Yeah.
I, I would think, no.
It's not trash, though. There's difference between trash and old furniture.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Dan?
Tony, I, so, I just, first of all, I think you're really reaching with the safety issue. I think you're going a little over. I don't think it's a safety issue at all. I live right near there as well. And to continuously say that it's junk and debris, I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't know, last time, any of you guys actually stopped by there and looked, but there's a lot of usable items there, quite a few usable items there. I've taken quite a few things out there myself, I know a lot of people who do. So, you keep saying it's junk and debris, and he's just out, open-air storing it. If it was just junk and debris, I don't think anybody would take junk and debris. I don't want to just take debris to my house and throw it on my lawn. So, it's obviously usable stuff, a lot of it is. And, you know, and defensive Mr. Holdcraft, he's, he's right, you know? I go by there, and I see this stuff there. Next time I come around the block, I'll pull in there and see if there's anything I need. By the end of the day, it's usually empty. A lot of, a lot of that stuff turns over. Shake your head all you want, but if you go by every day, it's empty.
I've seen, I, I, I'm there all the time. It's not true at all. It's more than one day or two days. It's like weeks at a time.
Well, maybe some stuff might last there, but usually it all gets picked up. So, I just, you guys keep calling it junk and debris, and as, as a citizen of the town, I find it to be a lot of this stuff is usable. Not all of it, but a lot of it is. It's one of your mistakes.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How would you feel if you allowed Mr. Holdcraft to store your front yard?
Well, he's not storing your front yard either. So, we're not going to do a back... Gentlemen, 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 we're not going to do a back and forth here. Thank you.
I'm in a business district.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion, unless there's any?
Do you want to say something?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Dave? Thank you.
I live on the common in a very lovely house. My children come to visit me by night, and they say, "Monk, how are we ever going to sell your house? We haven't come by all the junky houses and the yellow sign and the crack of the air." Maybe someone can tell me.
Anybody else? Discussion through the board? Any? Done? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, what would be the right term?
To deny Mr. Holdcraft's appeal or to approve Mr. Holdcraft's appeal?